Good evening and welcome to the May 20th meeting of the Finance and Downtown Economic Development Committee. Madam Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Counsel Croll, Counsel DeBona, Counsel Harris, Counsel Hughes, Counsel Liang, Counsel Mahoney, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Pamucci, Chairman Kane.
Present.
Eight members of the floor.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. So last we left Counsel Hughes put a motion on the table to entertain the concept of separating the different parts of this LDA. We are in receipt of a memo from the city solicitor referencing that suggestion, but to, I think Counsel Hughes, to bring this back in. You laid it on the table. We'll need to take a vote to bring it out and then we can have Solicitor Timmons address this.
Okay.
So, Madam Clerk?
Counsel Croll.
Yeah.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Hughes. Counsel Liang. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Pamucci. Chairman Kane.
Yes. Great.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Timmons.
Members of the body, apologies for being late. Not ready for prime time, apparently. I sent out a memo earlier today and the reason I'm leading off in terms of our presentation and what I intend to address is concerns that were raised that frankly, I'm sorry that when I was here the last time and spoke, I wasn't aware that you would receive some information regarding concerns about Chapter 30b, Chapter 40, Section 15, and how those and other issues might relate to both the tolling agreement and the reverter. So what I wanted to do was review for you sequentially what happened in regard to the tolling agreement because that is something that I negotiated. Back in 2016, I worked almost exclusively with Mr. Broderick on behalf of, he's an attorney with Goodwin who's here tonight, he's been here on behalf of Fox Rock for all meetings. But back at the time, we were the two point people on the tolling agreement and I had previously spent a lot of time working in concert with a few other lawyers in our office on the Stewart bankruptcy, rather Quincy Medical bankruptcy and the Stewart acquisition of the hospital during that process. So I had some knowledge of the existing reverter and knowledge of the circumstances up at the hospital at the time when Stewart came forward and said after three years of operation that they wanted to pull the plug after pledging a commitment that was supposed to span at least a decade. So I think it's important for the body to understand because these are factors that went into the consideration of the tolling agreement, what the objectives of the parties were. In 2014, you'll all recall, I believe, that Stewart announced rather abruptly they were going to leave the city and there was a protracted negotiation that involved the Attorney General's Office, the Department of Public Health, the city and Stewart that resulted finally in them leaving in December of 2014 and retaining only an emergency department, emergency services. Part of the reason for that was the existence of a reverter when Stewart took title. Stewart was the owner of the hospital at the time, subject to a reverter provision that said that the property would return to the city if they stopped putting it to a medical use. And obviously packing up and leaving the city was stopping their medical use. They thereafter embarked on a two-year odyssey to try to sell the property and they brought forth at least, we're aware of nine proposals. Most of the proposals were for residential use. A couple of them related to medical, but none of them were acceptable. And one of the issues we had all along was we felt that there was no reason for Stewart to act in good faith regarding another medical entity coming into the city. They were keeping the Carney Hospital open, they were keeping this emergency department in the city which was going to generate business, so we didn't think they were acting in particularly good faith regarding a hospital use. So at that point, as things came into focus, there was grave concern on the part of the mayor that the city was going to be left out of kind of the hospital shuffle that had been going on. You may all recall back at the time that community hospitals like Milton and South Shore were partnering with Boston Hospitals in a manner that Quincy had been unsuccessful in doing so. And it appeared we were going to kind of be left as the bride at the altar with no one to, you know, to rescue the city as far as healthcare services. Well, after two years of marketing in 2016, Fox Rock came forward. And it's important for you to understand that when they came forward on Whitwell Street, it wasn't solely on that property, which was now again a distressed property. Stewart bought it at a distressed sale essentially and now Stewart had made clear that it wanted to sell and the property had languished for two years, so it was again in a distressed state. However, when Fox Rock approached, they were the first entity, they didn't just talk about Whitwell, they talked about the downtown as well. And that is why the tolling agreement that Fox Rock signed, it's called an amended and restated tolling agreement, while the restated provision essentially relates to the fact that their real objective in purchasing the hospital site was to return medical use to the city of Quincy, but they didn't necessarily believe it was going to happen on the hill. And that's why they engaged the mayor on the Ross slot. Fox Rock's experience, as I, excuse me, briefly outlined in the memo that we were made aware of back in 2016 was their successful work in collaboration with South Shore Hospital. Fox Rock was a property owner in Weymouth in a similar manner to how they have become one here in Quincy. And they developed relationships with South Shore Hospital and Boston Healthcare Facilities that resulted in what has been a very successful expansion of South Shore Hospital. It's a very vibrant facility today and they envisioned back in 2016 that something like that could happen here in Quincy. But there was a lack of certainty because of what had gone on at the hospital site. And it's important to recall that as far as the Whitwell facility failed in 1999, that's when the city sold it. They sold to a nonprofit, Quincy Medical Center, Inc., that ended up filing bankruptcy. And in 2011, Quincy Medical Center, Inc., after failing, sold to Stewart. Stewart didn't make it anywhere near as long as Quincy Medical Center, Inc., which was a local collaborative. It was a lot of local physicians, it was folks who had already been engaged up at the Quincy Medical Site. Well, they couldn't make it, Stewart couldn't make it, Fox Rock came along and said, "We will acquire that site, but we don't believe that's the site that's going to work in terms of the evolving world of healthcare, particularly how healthcare might work here in Quincy." So that's why, at the time that Mayor Koch considered Fox Rock as a buyer of Whitwell, he contemporaneously began the discussions on in the Ross parking lot. And the two of them are linked together in the tolling agreement because back in 2016, Fox Rock, like all prior suitors at the site, like the prior operators at the site, was aware that Quincy Medical had long existed on Whitwell Street. And when you read the tolling agreement, there is a provision in the tolling agreement that part of their effort over the succeeding two years, once this agreement was signed, was to restore users up at the site. Now Counsel McCarthy was kind enough to call me this afternoon and I detected a little tone of glee as he advised me that he thought part of my memo was a little unclear and he provided me with some very helpful insight. There's a section on the section page, rather second page where I talk about what I am now talking about, which is Fox Rock committed to either returning medical users to the site at Whitwell and if they were able to do so to a certain volume of use for at least seven years, then we would presume compliance with the reverter provision and the reverter would be extinguished. In addition, they said they wanted to undertake efforts in what was their real target and that has proved properly so as we sit here tonight and understand the LDA before you. But they said they were going to try to bring users who would really uptick the medical game in Quincy down to the downtown area into a facility that would be state-of-the-art and first-class. Whitwell Street did not have that sort of capability to house those types of users. I have material with me. I brought, I had mentioned last time I spoke that I have appraisals and that I had some documents that were provided both to the bankruptcy court and the Attorney General that were site evaluations about the condition of the site and the cost of bringing the site online. I have those again with me tonight. I've tried to make them available. I, I know I offered them when there was a public records request from some of the neighbors who have reached out to you, particularly Mr. Mulrain. I advise that I have all these documents in my office and I'm very willing to make them available to you, but they're a bit voluminous, copy's not going to work and also they're commercial real estate appraisals and unless you are experienced in that realm, it might be a bit burdensome to go through them, so. But I have them here essentially as a prop tonight to show you that there is data that verifies and validates what I'm telling you now about the fact that the site up at Whitwell has been vetted and it's not going to work. We've seen that since 1999. And what the restated tolling agreement was about was not simply tolling things as we did with Stewart, putting them on hold, but we worked with Fox Rock about a bigger picture involving a potential LDA and the Ross parking lot. And I believe that's some of what has spawned the concerns of the folks that are reaching out to you. So that backdrop is very important to your consideration because as you sit here today, you should understand that the vision back in 2016 has come to fruition. I myself am, I would call it delightedly surprised, knowing everything I know, having gone through everything I've gone through, I think the fact that we have the entities coming to the downtown or pledging to come to the downtown that we do is a terrific turn of events. And I think that what was envisioned in 2016 has actually played out and I don't think there was any problem with the vision or any technical issues with the agreements. And I'll quickly just review those two items. First, the notion that Chapter 30b, which is called the Uniform Procurement Act in Massachusetts, that that would apply, I think is pretty readily addressed. First of all, 30b requires bid process if you're looking to retain services of individuals or if you're, it's goods and services. If you're looking to procure supplies or goods or if you're looking to procure the services of professionals, consultants, individuals, and with some exceptions, you have to undergo a bid process. 30b specifically provides that if you're dealing with real estate, there's a unique and a separate section that talks about what you have to do there. That section is Section 16. What it says, and I'm quoting here, I actually, this is, I believe in this little handy book of documents that you folks received at the last meeting, but it says in 30b, Section 16a, that if a governmental body is renting, conveying, or otherwise disposing of real property. So it's specific about real property and we're talking about a right of reverter, which is not real property. You have to keep in mind that the city of Quincy has not owned this real estate since 1999. And post-1999, there have been three separate owners, so there's no ownership interest up there for us to be dealing with under Chapter 30b. What we're dealing with is what's called a contingent future interest and it's also another legal term, non-vested. In other words, we don't have anything right now other than a deed provision. And the deed provision has not vested, meaning there's still a healthcare provider up at the hospital. So we essentially have, you know, we do have an interest and that's why 40, Section 15 comes into play, as I mentioned in my memo. But I found in my research a quote, and this was in response to Counsel Liang's inquiry. She had been asking, and as all of you have been interested, she asked more particularly about appraising a right of reverter. And I told you back at the time that I do not believe you can appraise a right of reverter. We have not been able to find any commercial appraiser who can do it. And I'm going to read you a quote. This is, it's actually from one of the limited things I could find about valuing a right of reverter and it's out of North Carolina. However, they're citing American Jurisprudence, which is a recognized treatise in that, once we leave law school, we leave behind. But this is on properties and estates and the quote from this American Jurisprudence, which was used by the Attorney General of North Carolina and, South Carolina rather, in responding to an inquiry. "A possibility of reverter has no ascertainable value when the event upon which the possessori estate and fee simple defeasible will end is not likely to occur in the near future." Now what does that mean? Back in 1999, when the hospital was conveyed, what we said was if it stops operating as a hospital, it, the land and the hospital site come back to the city, presumably with the objective of the city putting a new hospital user in play. The fact of the matter is, we didn't know how, when that might occur. You folks have talked here about the possibility of a reverter in the LDA for the Ross site, that if things don't get started quickly enough, that the property would revert back to the city. Two-year window, three-year window, five-year window, it's a limited period of time, it's measurable, we know, we can watch, and there are no steps to be taken. That's a reverter that is looked upon with a little more favor. This reverter, which is for 30, and when I say that, I would strongly recommend against any reverter and I can talk about that if asked later. That'll affect financing, it'll affect all kinds of things. But it's a good example of a short-term reverter that you folks are considering. And it contrasts with the reverter up at the hospital site. One other little thing is that the deed itself, which you all have copies of, I know the deed made its way into that handout that you received. The deed in 1999 does talk about a right of reverter, as does the subsequent deed to Fox Rock. However, more particularly the deed in 1999 says, "Any disputes can go to land court." I will tell you now that when we negotiated the tolling agreement with Stewart, it's because we were engaged in a real struggle with them over the reverter. We asserted that we were going to be filing a Norfolk Registry of Deeds when they said they were going to leave the city and seeking the reversion. We told them, "We're not going to let you do that flat out." And there was a lot of pushback, including, "We will sue and we believe we can extinguish this." One of their theories was that the reverter was requiring a medical use up at the hospital site and yet for decades, parties had gone up there and failed. So Stewart was asserting that doctrine of impossibility, that while we put the reverter there, that it was impossible for someone to successfully do that, so it wasn't a proper encumbrance on land. There are issues like that that are floating behind the scenes here that caused us, when we talked in 2016, to look at more than just dollar value on the reverter. In addition to a dollar value on the reverter, we obtained the pledges that you see in the tolling agreement that Fox Rock did in fact honor in terms of good faith efforts in the downtown. They now have this project that had been a mere vision three years ago before you. And in addition to that, we have a reverter in place where we're going to get paid $4.25 million. Now, another hypothetical here. If, as the proposed amendment would seek to do, if we would separate the hospital and the reverter, hospital site and the reverter, from the downtown, once the hospital goes in in the downtown and the city of Quincy gives its blessing by way of signing off on the LDA to go downtown, build a hospital, we're going to move everything down there, what do you think is going to happen up at Whitwell Street? The owner, rather than paying us $4.25 million, would go to the land court, pay Mr. Broderick and his colleagues maybe half of that number, and I'm being facetious, it would not be that expensive or difficult a task to go into the land court and say, "The city of Quincy moved medical services to the downtown. They don't need the reverter up at that site anymore." And they've worked to make that happen. And the city of Quincy knows that the reverter, or rather that the medical uses up at Whitwell Street don't work because they sold the site in 99 and they've seen three failures up there. So tying the reverter and a value for the reverter to this whole package was very critical. And it answers the question that Counsel DeBona asked. You asked a question when I was last here, but I didn't happen to be at the podium. You said, "What's in this for the taxpayers of Quincy?" $4.25 million. That's in it for the taxpayers of Quincy Counselor and Counselors. And that's a number that's guaranteed, that is going to happen as part of the bigger transaction because of how we dealt with this. Now, having done that and now moving forward, the issue of council approval, we have not released the reverter yet. And that's what Chapter 40, Section 15, talks about, releasing an interest in real estate. We have not done that yet. We have agreed that if certain things occurred, that we would release the right and interest. And that's exactly what's happening now. And once all of it occurred, we waited until Fox Rock was able to come forward with specific plans. Were they going to do something up at the site? Were they going to do it in the downtown? Once they came forward with a specific project in the downtown, that's when we brought the whole package before you. And it's all tied together. And now we're seeking the release of the reverter because it's appropriate, it's going to dovetail with the reality of the situation about healthcare moving to the downtown and an obsolete site that has failed continuously, still resulting in a payment of $4.25 million. Had we not tied these things together, we could not have done both. It would not have happened. The owner prior to Fox Rock, Stewart, had, until Fox Rock had come along, they were seriously contemplating just putting a user up in there long enough to cover the overhead. I heard this from the, specifically from the Stewart General Counsel here in City Hall. He told me, "We will put," and he mentioned a couple of different uses, "up at that site and they'll stay there until we're ready to sell it and we'll take you to land court and you'll lose the reverter." I, you know, I felt at the time, he was very frustrated with what had gone on because we were not, we weren't letting them up for air on this. We wanted a medical user there and we weren't releasing the reverter. Contrast that with Fox Rock, which came forward with a plan and has not challenged the reverter, which is challengeable. These don't go on forever. This is another thing that's been lost a bit in all the excitement here, is that there's an underlying presumption that that reverter is something bulletproof and it is not necessarily. And even if it is, it expires in 30 years by operation of law. Statutes don't allow reverters to continue forever. So this statute was, rather, this reverter was placed on the site in 1999, so in 2029, it's going to expire by operation of law. So if someone keeps an emergency department going up there or some other uses, if they just keep things going, in 2029, it will expire by operation of law and hypothetically, we may not have a medical use there, we may not have one in the downtown. So there are various moving parts that were evaluated by the mayor, decisions made, and at the point in time when things were finalized, when we had final plans to the downtown, when we knew that the reverter would be appropriate to release on Whitwell, that's when we brought that before this body for approval. Prior to that, nothing has occurred in that regard. If you were to read the deed that was prepared in 1999, it talks about the fact that the city council approved a deal negotiated by the mayor, that's specifically in the deed. So this is how Plan A form of government works and that's what happened here. There was nothing illegal or untoward. I saw one quote in that memorandum that I referenced where it said, "This was a private deal." Well, I found that extremely intriguing, but more so inaccurate. Ms. Tiernan's predecessor at the Patriot Ledger, Patrick Ronan, has an article that I have here, because I went back to see, I thought everyone knew about this and they did. There's a multi-page article that you can find online, December 8th, 2016, about this whole deal and includes the reverter. It talks about everything I'm talking to you about tonight, everything. The whole deal was disclosed back then, we said what was going on and to the extent maybe if someone says, "I didn't come up and tell them" or "The mayor didn't tell them," the Patriot Ledger knew and reported it. And it's got all the details. So yes, the mayor negotiated a deal, but it certainly wasn't private. There's very little that goes on anymore in government that is private and I think everyone here knows that and understands it. So the, the deal was put together by the executive branch, it has to be approved by the legislative branch and it's before you today. Now, one other thing I'll point out is that if you read 40a, Section 15, what it says is that when you conduct your review, you are to set a minimum value for the sale of the property. It doesn't say you are to set the value, it doesn't say a maximum value, it says a minimum value. And I am telling you, and we can support it, if you need further data- And I am telling you, and we can support it if you need further data, that the $4.25 million is a maximum value. That was the maximum value that could be obtained at the time of the sale. To say it is a minimum value below which we should not sell it, I think this body can be very comfortable, because the fact of the matter is, there are several scenarios by which the reverter could be rendered valueless. In addition to that, the reverter is very hard to value. A reverter interest is hard to value, as I've said repeatedly, because it's a contingent future interest. Until someone leaves that hospital site and stops operating, hospital uses, I'll say for lack of better terms, reverter is nothing. It's something that could occur, but doesn't necessarily have value. And just one final comment. Hypothetically, if we did put the reverter out to bid, or if we somehow tried to market it, I don't quite know what is contemplated as far as an outcome. You know, is Acme Investment going to buy the reverter for $1 million and then say, "No one can do anything up there until they pay us $10 million"? Is a hospital user going to buy it and then wait and see? Steward waited out all its competitors and finally sold to FoxRock because, at the time, I mean, FoxRock is a real estate investor, not a healthcare provider. So, I don't see any scenario by which a bid process would have been helpful here. There was active market negotiation and market activity, and I can share the record of all of that with you, and would be happy to. But I'm representing it to you as the lawyer for the city and a participant in a lot of this. And I really strongly urge you to, while I understand Counselor Hughes's amendment, and while technically, there may be issues whether an LDA can be amended, the fact of the matter is, the administration is going to, we have to work collectively on this because the way the LDA works, the last letter is A for agreement. You have to sign off on it, the mayor has to sign off on it, and if we don't agree, then we don't have an agreement. FoxRock understands that. So, whether we use the term of amendment or condition, the fact of the matter is, we're going to continue this exercise with the body. I will be strongly urging the mayor, at such point in time as we're ready to finalize things, and I will do so with all due respect to whatever conclusions the body reaches, that we cannot separate what's going on up at Whitwell Street from what's going on downtown because both of them relate to healthcare in the city of Quincy. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, I apologize for getting you off to a late start. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Timmons.
I know in 17, we have healthcare.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I guess we'll, yeah, recess, and we'll pick back up after the council's meeting starts. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the public hearing before us, the first public hearing on Council Order 2019-081, which is utility grant of location for Mass Electric, 150 Hancock Street. Anybody in the audience here this evening wishing to speak in favor or opposition? First call. Favor opposition, second call. Favor or opposition, third call. Okay. If you are out in the audience, but public speaking isn't necessarily your thing, we do offer sign-in sheets for you to weigh in at the back of the room here in the council chamber, so please make yourself comfortable with those. Jim, I see you out in the audience. You're a frequent flyer. Did you have anything that you wanted to share with the body regarding this? And welcome.
Evening, councilmen. Basically, we're here for a stub pole. We have pole three, Whitwell, and the guy wire goes into the tree. The pole itself, pole three, has to be replaced, and we're not, we're kind of not in the business of putting pole tree guys anymore. So, we're going to replace pole three. We need a stub pole cross street to support that old pole tree guy, basically, in a nutshell.
Questions from the body? Seeing none, call this portion of the public hearing closed at 7:18. Okay. Second public hearing of the night. We would like to open for Council Order 2019-093, which is utility grant of location, Mass Electric, 150 Hancock Street. Anybody here this evening wishing to speak in favor or opposition? First call. Second call. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Okay. Last and final call. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Much like the first public hearing, if you don't feel like you want to come to the microphone and weigh in, there are sign-in sheets for you to voice your sentiment out back. Mr. Pearson, we'd welcome you back to the microphone, sir.
Evening again. Actually, this is half of the whole thing I needed to have for that job. Reason why we're here tonight, 150 Hancock Street, is a new building going up right near our power lines, and there's no place to put the lines. The building is close to the back of the sidewalk. To maintain proper clearance, there is actually four grants. The one that's in front of you tonight is for a sole-yo pole in conduit. That's the first half. Verizon has the other half, which we're jointly owned. They have not submitted the paperwork yet. We submitted to them back in April, and we're following up with them now because, as you know, city council at the end of June closes for the summer, and this gentleman over here is almost at a stop until we can get Verizon to get the paperwork in for the rest of the poles, so we can underground the cables and get the poles out there and the wires out of there. So, in a nutshell, that's what that's about.
The session may close for the summer, but the work always continues, Mr. Pearson. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, I call this portion of the public hearing closed, 7:23. Good evening, everyone. Last public hearing, Council Order 2019-094, utility grant of location, Mass Electric. This is the second part of 150 Hancock Street. Anybody in the audience here this evening wishing to speak in favor or opposition? First call. Favor or opposition, second call. Last and final call, favor or opposition. Seeing none, again, similar to what we've already covered. If you wish to weigh in, there are sign-in sheets available to you in the back of the room, and please use them as you see fit. Any questions from the body? I know we heard from Mr. Pearson already. This is part two of 150 Hancock. Seeing none, I will call this portion of the public hearing closed at 7:26. We'll resume the regularly scheduled city council meeting at 7:30. Good evening, everyone, and to the Monday, May 20, 2019, meeting of the Quincy City Council. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
President Crowe.
President. Eight members. At this point, I would invite my colleagues in the audience, please rise and join me in a moment of silence, keeping in our thoughts and prayers those courageous men and women who defend our country. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. With that, Mr. Clerk, the first item on the agenda, please. Oh, excuse me, actually, reading of the open meeting law into the record.
Sure. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting and may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore to be advised that such readings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and personal.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. With that, the first item on the agenda, please, or prior to.
Prior to, yeah. Is honoring Abigail Newton, Nation Cups of Theater on Ice winner.
Esteemed Counselor from Ward Six, Mr. Harris. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Crowe, and thank you, councilors. At this time, I'd like to call up Abigail Newton to the podium. Obviously, we all know who Abigail is, but for the folks out there, Abigail is the daughter of Joe Newton, our esteemed assistant clerk, and Laura Newton, your mother in the audience, and your brother, Michael. And this is an amazing young lady. I can't even imagine, I'm shaking standing up here in front of you folks, right? I can't even imagine being in France in front of a stadium full of people, representing not only our city, but our country, and winning the gold. And that in itself speaks for itself. I have to ask you a question first, though. Did your father teach you how to skate? But we know your dad skated through a lot of things. But I'm only being funny and trying to be funny. But, Abigail, in honor of your gold medal win at the National Cup Theater on Ice competition in France, you and your team's hard work and dedication to your sport have been deservedly rewarded. You are a role model and an inspiration to all. We extend our sincere congratulations on this tremendous accomplishment, and best wishes for your continued success. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Clerk, the first item on the agenda.
Mr. President, first order on the agenda is 2019-095. It's an order, land disposition agreement parcel R2, R3, Hancock.
Motion made by the Finance Chair to waive the reading on the motion, Counselor.
Motion to move this into Finance ordinance and Downtown Economic Development.
Motion made by Counselor Kane, second by Counselor DeBona. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, please, Mr. Clerk.
Next item on the agenda is 2019-096. It's an order, increase of income limit for senior tax deferral program.
Motion, motion to approve.
What's that?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion made by Counselor Kane to approve, second by Counselor DeBona. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I mean, excuse me. It's ingrained, it's ingrained. I've been doing this for.
I know.
It's ingrained.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
President Crowe.
Yes. Eight members, the item passes. Mr. Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
The next item on the agenda is 2019-097, land gift of conveyance, 394 to 408 Center Street.
Okay. With that, I know this is an item in Ward Four. Do we want to maybe move this to Park and Recreation? Do we want an explanation? What's, Mr. Walker, do you want to speak to this? I know you've been working on it.
Through you, Mr. President. I know Solicitor Timmons has worked on this as well. If there are any questions at this point, I know we've talked relative to the Ward Four Counselor, this being very important to him. So, obviously, the administration would certainly defer to the Ward Counselor to speak in greater detail, but if it's the body's wish to continue forward, Solicitor Timmons is here and is, was involved in the process of accepting or authoring this legislation.
Mr. Timmons, would you like to speak on the conveyance? Please, sir. Thank you, Chris.
Background, is that what you're asking for?
Yes, please.
Okay. Back in December, when this came before you, there was an acquisition of part of this parcel. It's an initiative by Counselor Palmucci in his ward, the corner of Bergen Parkway and Center Street. And the land in December was what's called registered land. It's recorded in the land court section. And the agreement that was reached by the parties was that the city purchased that portion of the land, and that, at a later date, we were going to take a gift of the balance of the land. So, there was somewhat of an accounting issue on the part of the seller, and that prompted the closing in the two-step manner that occurred. So, but this is a contiguous parcel. It's all part of the one project.
And I think it's the parcel located right next to the car wash, maybe, right? Is that?
Yes, yeah. It should turn the corner off of Bergen onto Center. It's between the car wash and the, now, the newly constructed on-ramp.
So, I mean, being a Ward Counselor, I'm assuming that Counselor Palmucci is noticing sort of the overgrowth and wants to take more control of it and actually make it an asset to that section of his district.
That was his goal. I recall that being stated at the time, and I know when he was negotiating it, I was involved a bit, along with another attorney from the office, John Bacon, and that was his stated goal. The hope is to create a park there, or the plan, I should say, not hope.
And he, Counselor Hughes.
No, I was just going to say, it sounds like something that Counselor Palmucci, working here, would be supportive of, so move to approve.
Motion made by Counselor Hughes, second by Counselor McCarthy. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
President Crowe.
Yes. Eight members, the item passes. All right. The approval of, and thank you, Jim, approval of previous meeting minutes from May 6, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. At this point, I'm going to recess the regularly scheduled city council meeting. We're going to go back into Finance, and then we'll come back and conclude the meeting. Thank you. Finance and Downtown Economic. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Timmons? Pardon?
I just wanted to, for, uh, Congress, if I could, if you could.
Oh, sure. I just wanted, through you, Mr. President, to, Mr. President, elevated, Mr. Chairman, to Solicitor Timmons, if the solicitor could come to the microphone.
Solicitor. Jim?
Jim. Thanks. So, this is very thorough, and I appreciate the work that's been put into this, and I'm trying to, well, I understand what you're saying. I don't, you know, I don't have any clarification issues, except for the fact that I just want to go back to the reverter as not being bulletproof, as being possible to be extinguished in terms of, it's a 30-year operation on the land, right? In 30 years, by statute, it will extinguish.
Right. By operation of statute on the 30th anniversary, it would simply expire by operational law.
Okay. And then also, you talked about the land court possibly saying that this is an unreasonable encumbrance on the land, or that they could find that if someone wanted to purchase the property, if they decided to take the city to court, to land court. Is that a possibility?
Well, I, you know, one of the issues, I don't want to go too far with this because then you end up bidding against yourself, but, meaning, I don't want to discuss the other side's case for them, but one of the reasons that we entered into this agreement, and I know that this was an ebb and flow and give and take on the part of both parties, because there was a lot, the site obviously has value, so the acquisition is important, but... but, you know, if you had ever lost the reverter thing, there was a lot of risk, and that's what prompted the purchaser to buy it. But from our perspective, Stewart really laid out some aggressive arguments about what they might do.
Right.
And one of them was the fact that three consecutive hospitals had failed up there, and that the site was obsolete now. They had done extensive work, they were required by a judgment in the bankruptcy court, a condition in the bankruptcy court, and subsequently by the Attorney General, because the Attorney General was involved in the review of the first sale, because Quincy Medical was a nonprofit. So, we had two fairly strong-armed entities reviewing things, and in order to acquire it, in the first instance, Stewart had pledged to conduct a capital investment campaign up there. And part of what happened was, in the first couple of years, as they were getting in and evaluating the needs of the facility, the money they spent, they reported a $68 million loss in 2000, either 10 or 11, the last year they were operating, $68 million. Now, how much of that was accounting? How much of it related to actual, you know, boots on the ground up at the site? I don't know, but that's a significant amount of money, and that was a real spike, and that was when they decided to leave. But the point is, these are the types of arguments that Stewart was saying they were going to raise at the time, and that they would challenge in land court the reverter, claiming that it was just no longer practical. One of the reasons, I alluded to the fact earlier, that reverters for a shorter term are favored, and reverters for a longer term are not, and that's why this statute was enacted, to limit them to 30 years, because things change. And what has changed, what's more demonstrative of that proposition than the hospital industry? All the community hospitals in Greater Boston are either distressed or failed. And Quincy Medical was based in the community hospital approach to healthcare services. Stewart came in with a program, they bought Taunton Hospital, Quincy Hospital, several community-based hospitals, they owned the Carney in San Elizabeth, and their program was that we can continue on a community-based approach, and they failed. So, their argument was going to be, until FoxRock came along, that they would challenge the reverter and just claim that it was impossible and that it should be rescinded for that reason. So, avoided, well, I don't recall the exact legal term. So, you know, there were risks here in regard to the reverter, and that's one of the reasons why, you know, with the tolling agreement and the good faith negotiation that went on here, the goal was to secure a deal, not just about the hospital site and the reverter and what it might be worth, but the bigger picture of healthcare. And that's where FoxRock was unique, as opposed to the nine prior suitors who had been coming to the table and talking to the mayor about what they might do up there.
So, throughout this memo, you talk about the provisions in the reverter and the value of the reverter being intrinsic to the LDA, and really not being able to move forward on the LDA unless it's a part of it.
Yes, there's that, and then also, I think that's part of, like, the 4.25 million is part of the value.
Right.
Of what FoxRock has brought to this whole process, but in addition, they've done a lot to bring healthcare to the downtown, which is going to be tremendously valuable over the long haul, and other things that were done up at the site. I know right now, they have the proposed project, and that's been very difficult for folks to digest and deal with, but, you know, that was subject to some pre-planned permitting adjustments and whatnot, and it's going to go through a separate and distinct review. So it's already being treated separately. What they do up there has to go through a permit review process, but we could not have brought what FoxRock brought to the table if we hadn't done what happened here. I specifically recall Mr. Real talking about the fact that part of the goal in securing, it might have been Mr. Broderick, but, part of the goal in securing Quincy Medical Center was it allowed FoxRock to control the medical environment in Quincy and determine it. And they pledged to work with Mayor Koch, which they then subsequently did. If they were down here trying to bring a user in while someone was up at Whitwell doing the same thing, and you have the competing issues, that's what was going on from 2011 to 2016.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Jim.
Mr. Timmons, I just want to go back to something you said earlier, when you said that we had gotten, lost in the excitement, or something had got lost in the excitement. I want to just take an opportunity to point out that I feel as though there is this notion out there that what else is getting lost in the excitement is any notion that, you know, we don't want to see some sort of medical use in the city. And I'm just making a statement, I'm not trying to say that you were wrong, I'm just saying that I'm using that opportunity to reiterate that, you know, any questions that we've had to date and any conversations we've had to date, I believe anyways, and certainly from my point of view and from folks I've talked with, is not to not end up with some sort of medical use facility in this city. You know, that is what we want to see, and I think that, similar to what you said with things getting lost in the excitement, I feel like, you know, the questions that we have and any concerns that we're bringing up, and, you know, questions we have about the tolling agreement and what's going on down here, again, creates this sort of idea that we maybe don't want it, or trying to be, you know, prohibitive of it happening. I just want to reiterate that, you know, I think the notion is that we do want to see some sort of medical use facility. I think that there's...
Saying I was implying that?
Well, no, you just said that, you know, there are some things that are lost in the excitement, and then, you know, there's, I feel like, constant mention of, well, you know, we need this, we need this medical use down here, we need to have this move forward, we really need to make sure we don't lose out on this opportunity. I don't disagree with any of those things, and I just, again, want to make sure that, you know, any notion that we don't want to see some medical use is not the sort of starting point, you know, in these kinds of conversations, so I just wanted to clarify that. I have two questions for you, and they're both pertaining to different appraisals. The first one is in reference to the number two question on the overall sheet of the questions we had, you know, related to the LDA, and it's the appraisals that you guys had used in negotiations for the $4.25 million valuation of the reverter, and it says here that you can provide them, and you had mentioned also that you have, you know, quite extensive amount of paperwork in your office that can support, you know, what conversations and sort of what research has been done to get to the 4.25, but then later on, you had said that there is no ascertainable value to the reverter, right? And that the $4.25 million is the highest maximum value of the reverter? So I'm just confused, is there actually something in your office or something, somewhere, that we can actually look at and go through to find out how you got to the 4.25, or does that not exist?
There's nothing in my office, I mean, Mr. Broderick and I can sit in a room with you and talk about it and explain what happened, and I can go over the history. I have something that was prepared by Stewart's lawyers of the history of the offers that they brought to the table along the way, and I can tell you what we did in regard to the reverter on each occasion. The mayor had said 10 million in a couple of times, couple of occasions, but he told them, but I want a medical use up there as well. So, it was the product of negotiation, not the product of looking at some document that said this is what it is potentially worth. And the reason we didn't do that is because, again, I have commercial appraisals you could look at, I mean, there's just not an ability for an appraiser, a right of reverter is a potential interest, and the ability to value that. There's one potential way where you say, what is it worth with the reverter? What is it worth without the reverter? The problem was Quincy Hospital's value couldn't be ascertained, it was all over the place from 2011 to 2000, to date, we just went through a process at the Appell Tax Board with it. So the value of a distressed hospital site with structures on it that are obsolete, that are going to have to be torn down and removed, that can't be improved for you to use them, but it's sitting there with a provision that says this has to be used for a medical site, it's very constricting. So, the ability to value that unique site, that's the problem. Believe me, I would have loved if I could have, I have an entire cabinet full of documents, and if I could have reached in and pulled out something to add to number two, I would have been delighted. It does not exist. It was the product of negotiation and back and forth, and it was a number that we finally agreed to, but only under the totality of the circumstances, as I mentioned earlier.
Well, if we can at least even get some sort of, you know, not your entire filing cabinet, you know, I appreciate that, you know, if it truly is an entire filing cabinet of information and data and numbers that helped to draw this conclusion of 4.25 value of the reverter, again, just to give us something that, a summary, or, you know, something that shows that we can point to, to look at for a starting point for a conversation. I mean, and this is what I said to you last time, right? The number 4.25 didn't just come out of thin air, I imagine, right? I mean, there were a lot of folks in the room, I imagine, or there were a lot of conversations, I imagine, around it, and, you know, I just, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, I just don't see the conversation happening where it's like, okay, you start at 10, no, I'm going to start at 2, no, you go to 4, like, I just, I feel as though there has to be something that we can look at, that we can educate ourselves on, on how we came to 4.25. And that's what I was looking for in the original, when I originally asked for it, that's what I was looking for, because again, I don't know for that, so I'm looking for these documents so I can educate myself on how do we land on 4.25. If it came from Stewart's lawyers, from when they were looking for other folks and putting it out to bid, and that was a starting point, okay, fine, but at least that gives me a starting point. Right now, I have no idea where the starting point is for that conversation is, and what other information or data or facts were used to come to a conclusion that 4.25 was the value of the reverter.
Well, I'm telling you, I've stood here and I've said it, and you want me to reduce what I've said to writing, because that's really all I can do.
I don't want you to reduce what you're saying to writing, I want you to, I don't, I don't think I'm being clear. What I'm looking for is, you're telling me that there were, there were conversations and negotiations that led to 4.25. I personally feel as though those conversations were driven by knowledge that the person that was part of those conversations had about a value of this reverter.
Correct.
So what was that information that the person got to say, okay, I know the value of this reverter, let's sit down and negotiate? Like, I can't sit down and negotiate with you over the value of something that I have no idea what the value of that is, or some sort of idea, does that make sense? I can't come to you and negotiate and say, you know, this house, I'm going to get for $2, I need to do some research on that house, I need to see what the property values are in the area, right? And then I can come and sit down and negotiate with you. But, I've done some research, right, to understand where my low point and my high point would be in purchasing that house, right? So similarly to valuing this, this reverter, I imagine the folks who were part of the conversation came into it with some sort of range or some sort of idea of a dollar amount, and I just want to know what that information was that they brought to the table.
Well, this is what I'm trying to explain, perhaps your analogy is a good one. Yes, when you negotiate a price of a house, you can start with a high and a low, and you can look at comparable sales, that's what people do. People look at what's called replacement cost, how much would it cost me to build something or to buy this and put an addition on? There's all kinds of data out there, there are houses galore, sold constantly. How many reverters for hospitals in the Greater Boston region over the past five years have been on the market or produced data? Zero, none.
So then, how did we get to 4.25? I apologize for interrupting.
Yeah, well, please let me explain, because I'm saying the same thing over and over, and it's just somehow not registering with folks. We've used, I have eight, well, whatever, I have commercial appraisals over there, and I can tick off names of appraisers. The Attorney General hired a company to review what was going on. The bankruptcy court reviewed what was going on. There have been a number of Boston reputable appraisal companies that reviewed the value of Quincy Medical Center, all of them treated the reverter as an existing condition, the same way you might talk about contaminated dirt, but they didn't value it, and that's the problem. And I know it puts you in a difficult position, because your job is to sign off on value, and what you're saying to me is, I just want to have something tangible. Well, the problem is, in the realm of reverters, there's not a lot of tangible ability to evaluate, because it's a potential interest. Right now, there's a medical use up there, so there's, we don't have anything. Once the medical use stops, then we can assert our rights. Well, the mayor doesn't want to be sitting around with just that emergency department up there, and that's what we've been trying to work forward to do, so, it's a difficult thing, but if I had something more for you, honestly, I'd be, it would make everything easier, and I know it would make your job easier, but the fact of the matter is that it's just not out there, and there were a number of suitors that came forward, some dealt directly with the mayor, some I was involved with, but the value of the reverter is not something that we can do, what you were just talking about when you're trying to value a home, it's a very different game.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate you, you trying to explain it again. The reason I think why I'm not registering what you're saying is because I find it hard pressed to believe that the conversation then was, the way I'm hearing it, or maybe the way I'm understanding it now, you know, as you've explained it multiple times to me, is that quite literally folks were sitting across the table from each other saying random numbers, and somebody just landed on a number.
Well, they weren't entirely random, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying...
And that's, I don't believe they were, and that's why I'm asking then, where did the numbers come from? I just want to see where those numbers came from. I don't think they're random, I don't think anybody who'd be part of that conversation would come into it throwing out random numbers, I trust that they had some knowledge and they had some education as to what those negotiations were like, I just want to have access to that information.
Where we started, there was a report published by the Attorney General, it's over there, and I'll open to page 24, and the Attorney General said that the fair market value of the site at that time was somewhere between, or, the consultant reported to the Attorney General and the office accepted, somewhere between 15 and 28 million. That's what they said about fair market value. The offers that were coming into Stewart back at the time were, the highest was 18 million, and that's where the mayor, I believe, got the $10 million number from. The difference between the highest potential fair market value and the highest offer with the reverter in place. So, I would say there was a bit of science there, but again, we're talking about a distressed facility, meaning it was very hard to, to talk about fair market value up at the site, and it actually ended up selling to Stewart for, it was either 12 or 13, 13 or 12? 12 million. So we never hit the 18, thank you. So now, you back up from there, you know, there were offers, nothing got off the ground, the last closest number prior to the 12 was a $9 million offer. So we're starting to go in the other direction, and this was as, as time marched on up there. So, you know, there was, there were some other factors there. If you look at the tolling agreement, we had the four and a half million for the reverter, the one and a half million minimum buyout, or expenditure, I should say, if you recall in the tolling agreement, there was a condition that they'd spend one and a half million on marketing research, blah, 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 that's a total of 6 million, add it to the 12, now you're at 18. So, there were different factors that, that do kind of belie a science, but at the time, we all understood that as much as we might try to put this into a box, it was not a round pagan, a round hall exercise at any time. So, the numbers are reflective of the reality, but there was not a science to it, that's what I would say. We did the best we could.
Could you, could you give us a copy of that report? By the Attorney General?
Sure, I'll give you a copy when I get back to my seat, absolutely.
And that includes the consultant's report to the Attorney General in there, right?
I don't have that report, that's something she references, well, the Attorney, Office of the Attorney General references in the report.
Okay.
And it's set out on page 24, I'll get, I'll give that to you.
That'd be great, if you can actually get it to all of my colleagues as well, that'd be great.
Pardon?
If you could get it to the rest of my colleagues as well, that'd be great. Thank you. The next question I have for you is the appraisal of the Ross lot. So, we had gotten, we'd gotten a summary from you in this packet about the appraisal of the Ross lot, and that essentially it couldn't be appraised under its current restricted use. It says here, market demand for development sites in Quincy has been strongest for housing, but there are use restrictions on this lot, and so... but there are use restrictions on this lot, and so it's valued, I think the last page says it doesn't have a value, it's valued at zero. Couldn't we though at least get what the appraisal would be under normal conditions?
Pardon?
Couldn't we at least get the appraisal of that property under normal conditions? I understand that right now there are restrictions on the property, and so the conclusion seems to be that it's not valued at anything because of the restrictions, it makes it so difficult to develop, but again, this isn't helpful because I don't know the numbers of what we're looking at, right? So if we could-
A hospital site, you're saying?
No, this is down at the Ross lot.
Hospital site? Yeah, yeah. As close as you can get, the problem you have is, going back to your original analogy about comparable sales, first of all, there weren't, weren't a lot of hospitals selling.
No, no, this is the Ross lot.
Oh, the Ross lot, that's why I'm-
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Counselor.
Hi, Bill.
The appraisals that you're referring to have two components, and it really is a tutorial. Mr. Foster is the one who wrote the appraisal under what's referred to a methodology that's called the residual land value. One can say that the per square footage value of the Ross lot is based upon, as the solicitor said, comparable sales. So we could look at comparable sales, which were in the neighborhood of $140, and-
$140 per square foot?
Per square foot.
Okay.
And the price that the city paid for the Messina lot, which was taken by eminent domain. But the whole notion here is, and there's a complimentary memorandum from Pam McKinney, who's our reviewer, our real estate appraiser and reviewer, and she's an appraiser, a licensed appraiser as well, under the concept of when a community wants to inspire development that would not otherwise occur, because it's, the market isn't asking for it, the market isn't demanding it, and how do you value that property when you make a determination, as was explained by the solicitor, as to the city deciding that having a medical facility in the city, and particularly in the downtown area, has a value beyond the square footage value of $140 or $150 or $160, but no one would build it if they had to pay for the land. There's no market for it, and that's among the materials that FoxRock went out and commissioned a study, which has been made available to the council in terms of what is the market for medical services. And that really was a two-year process, and, and a very arduous process at that. And if one looks at economic development around Massachusetts based upon incentives under chapter 121A, it does allow a community, when it makes a determination that it wants a particular use to occur in certain areas, but that the market wouldn't put it there of their own volition, then that, that community is authorized to determine that for that use, if no one would do it, but we need it and we want it, then this residual land value determines, once you look at the proratas, which now the, the council has seen, that no one, and Mr. Broderick on behalf of FoxRock testified at this podium, that nobody would, would build this building if they had to purchase the land, and then, incidentally, pay taxes on, on top of that. So those two documents that have been provided to the council work in tandem. They explain this notion, as Pam McKinney said, the intrinsic value of land is diminished and can be diminished to zero if you put a limitation on it, if you put a restriction on it, and that's what the city is doing. The city is restricting FoxRock as to what they can do with that land, and that has a value for the community if they are able to proceed with a medical facility there. And as I have said here on numerous occasions, if we want more, you know, housing four over a podium, five over a podium, there is a market for that, there is a demand for that. But what we're attempting to accomplish here is to reinvigorate the economic engine in downtown Quincy, and have a mix of housing and, and commercial uses, and particularly a medical use, which the city commissioned a study by UMass, which has documented that that has in, and of itself, an intrinsic value for the city and for the revitalization of the downtown as an economic center that has a variety of commercial components to it.
Yeah, and I will just say, there is somebody that told me once not to speak in absolutes so much, because I always said, no, you know, never, and always, and no one, and I think it's a fair point to make, and I will just make it here, is that I think it's, I, I don't know that it's the best thing to do to speak in absolutes and, and say, no one, no one, no one, I mean, obviously someone, right, they're sitting here, someone was interested in that parcel, so I would just, I just wanted to make a note of it. I think sometimes speaking in absolutes can cause, cause some questions to come up, because when you kept saying, you know, no one, and, and no one was interested, and no one was going to do it, it just makes me wonder, okay, well, absolutely no one, so I'm just saying, it's, you know, not always the best thing to speak in absolutes, but-
I can't say that it's, it's absolute, but what I can say is, in the several years that I've been responsible for this activity, no one has presented themselves, no one, despite our best efforts through a variety of sources to reach out to prospective developers, nobody has come forward. And as it relates to the solicitor's point about the intrinsic value of that reverter, but for that reverter, but for its, its existence, there wouldn't be a market necessarily for medical uses here in the downtown. FoxRock has interest, has succeeded in getting two blue-chip medical facilities to be interested in coming here. That wasn't easy.
And that wasn't no one, right? I'm just saying, I'm just saying I don't like to speak in absolutes, but I actually, you know, you were talking earlier about, you know, explaining sort of how, how this appraisal process works for that particular property, and if somebody did wanna come and develop, you know, stick over podium there, you know, they would, and that's not what we're looking for, it's not what we want, you know, we definitely, like I said earlier, and I'll reiterate, do wanna see some medical use in the city. But this goes back to what I was asking Mr. Timmons, right, is, is I just want an appraised value of the property, though, even if it's not an appraised value for the restrictions of the project that's being proposed, it's for a different project that we don't necessarily want, yes, but again, it gives me a starting point, you know, so even if it's an appraised value for the property, if it were developed as housing, stick over podium, well, that would be helpful, because then we can deduce and say, okay, we could, we could-
We can provide that.
If you just let me finish.
Yeah.
We could deduce and say, okay, well, so if we were to then, you know, sell this property for its assessed value and have it be stick over podium, what is the value returned to the city? Versus if we go down the route that's in front of us right now and we get medical use, you know, because, again, this is helpful information for us to make that kind of decision. So I appreciate the information provided and explained as to why it is that the property can't be valued for this particular project, that's, that's helpful information, it's just not all of the information that I'm looking for. So whether it's, you know, going directly to Pam McKinney and asking her for the information, or if you could share that with us, again, it's helpful for us to, to look at both of those options and say, what is the best return for the city, if we go forward with this option or this option here? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so again, whether you want me to go to Pam McKinney and ask her, or if you could provide that information, if you could provide it to all of us, that'd actually be-
Yes.
That would be helpful.
Certainly.
Thank you, and I will just, I look forward to, to having those two pieces of information that I just, I just talked about, but I will just say that, and I will end with this, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but, you know, I, I don't, I, I'm not trying to be combative or difficult or anything, and I'm certainly not looking for things to be made easier. I, I just, this is a very big piece of property in the downtown, it's, we don't have much public land left, right? And similarly to what's going on in the hospital, okay, there's a big history there, there's a want and a need for medical use, there's a lot of things to consider with this vote, with this one particular LDA. I'm not looking for this information to make my, my job easier, I'm looking for it so that I can make the best decision and most educated decision possible, because it is a big responsibility, I'm not shying away from it, I don't want it to be easy, but we can't make it without this kind of information. So I appreciate that you guys are sharing this information with us, none of which you shared to date is invaluable, I mean, not valuable, I, I think it is, I think the more we're educated on what you guys know and what you guys see helps us to make the most educated decision. But I do not think that any of it is going to help me make an easier decision, none of this is going to be an easy decision, nor should it be. But I just, I don't, I don't appreciate that, you know, additional information is, is meant to be used to make my job easier, that's not what I'm looking for, I'm looking forward to make an educated decision. It's not to you, you're just the last guy standing up here, I'm just making a statement before I finish, so.
I certainly didn't, I don't believe I said that, Nora.
No, no, you didn't, again, you're just the last person standing up here, so.
I certainly respect, I certainly respect the quest for additional information, and we, and we will provide it.
And I appreciate that, Bill. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor DeBona.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could bring Mr. Timmons back up. Just to go back a little bit on the reverter, the 4.25 million, which you interpreted as being a benefit for the taxpayers of the city by receiving that sum of, of money, is that correct?
Yes, that's gonna go into the general fund. That's not money that gets tied into any of the diff activity or anything like that, that's gonna go directly to the general fund.
So it has nothing to do with the diff? This is a general fund that's gonna go towards possible budgetary items and anything that's-
Yeah, well, that's over my pay grade of it. I'm sure the mayor will have conversations with you folks.
Okay.
But it's definitely a general fund-
Sure.
-item, and that's, that's important, too, because one of the issues we raised in the bankruptcy court was how much money the taxpayers from the city of Quincy had paid over the decades to subsidize the operation of the hospital. And the data I had gathered, I, I was able to corroborate pretty directly, $70 million that had been paid over several decades. So, you know, this represents a stake for the taxpayers, and that's why the money's going to the general fund, one of the reasons.
Kinda leads me a little bit into, we're talking a little bit about the emergency room. It was under my presumption that this emergency room was gonna be a five-year, 60-month deal that would expire on December 31st of 2021, is that correct? Am I correct on that?
I believe it is, that was something negotiated between Stewart and FoxRock, and I, I believe they are up there for that period of time, yes.
So with this LDA that's in front of us, which has not been voted on yet, and if it is, with construct, well, with construction of the new 200, 200,000 square feet in the downtown, where in, where in the timeline does this emergency room gets, gets dismantled? Where, where, when does that happen?
I don't know about that, and I wouldn't necessarily wanna comment on that or think that discussion of it might be productive, only because you're talking about, right now, a private lease between Stewart and FoxRock, so we don't wanna get into any discussions that impair the, you know, the rights of the owner, because they have that leasehold interest up there. I know that the mayor will very aggressively make certain, because this is how this all began, that the city does not go without appropriate facilities located in the city proper, so I'm assuming that there'll be coordination in the same manner that we're hopeful this whole matter coordinates-
So you're trying to say that that may be transferred to a different site?
I, I don't know that one. That'd be something you could correctly engage the FoxRock folks, and I'm sure they'd happily speak with you about that.
It, it's a question that a lot of folks, the citizens of the city are asking me personally, and everything's on the table here, we have the, the two, the 114 Whitwell site on Wednesday coming in front of the planning board, and then we have this LDA in front of us today, but in the, in the middle of all this action is, that emergency room is still up on, on Whitwell site, and a lot of folks still basically need that operation, the emergency room, even with all this medical use gonna go to the downtown, that's gonna at least take a, I mean, I'm predicting at least 18 to 24 months to be built in the downtown for the medical use, but the Whitwell site is, it's gotta take between a year and two years to be built up in that site with it all being approved, so in the, in the whis-wash of all this discussion, we still have to provide a service for the folks and the citizens of the city, so that's why I'm kinda asking you, kinda where we're at for timeline, and I know we haven't approved these, or we haven't got to a vote yet, but it's something that's on the minds of a lot of people out there. I still know that there's a lot of senior housing, 125 Granite, 99 Granite, there's a lot of seniors that need immediate care, and it's a big discussion across the city anywhere we go, that what about the emergency room? We really need that. It kinda gets you to the emergency room, and then if you have to go to South Shore or in Boston, or whatever the case may be, at least you can get something that's immediate, whether you're being in an ambulance or not, or you can go right into there just in case something happens. Would you happen to know anything, is anybody from FoxRock can comment on any of this? This particular subject?
I really think that's a, I, I would much prefer and really recommend that that conversation take place first privately for you, and then you can go back and talk to people.
Okay.
Or at least give these folks time to consider how they might answer, because, as I said, there's private contract rights that are implicated, and, you know, you don't wanna say something now and have Stewart have something cooking that, that FoxRock's not aware of, you're not aware of, and then suddenly people are calling you in two and a half years saying, no, you told me something different. So I, I, I'm sure that there's very willing parties, FoxRock's been very forthcoming with information, to the extent the mayor would know something now, I'm certain the mayor would talk to you about it, because that's been the issue, as I explained at the beginning of all this, that was a real driver for him, was keeping healthcare service, and-
Sure.
He really held Stewart's feet to the fire when they're trying to leave the city.
It was brought up a little earlier, I thought I would piggyback a little bit on the emergency room with the fact of you're talking about the reverter, and we're kinda two and a half years in with the emergency room up there, without the site up, without the regular hospital up there. If I could, Mr. Timmons, can I bring up Mr. Jim Shea, our-
Oh, he's, you do whatever you want, I'm happy if it's bringing up another Jim.
Just everything that was discussed tonight, a lot of it was Mr. Timmons, the city solicitor. Is there anything that you need to add or kinda bring forward any, do you agree with everything that he has said, or is there any stipulations in there that he kinda didn't tell us, or is there anything that you can give us insight on?
I had a lot of conversation about this today and other times, I think, you know, there's some, you can have a different take on, you know, how to interpret one of these obscure laws like 30B or, you know, whatever it is, 40, section 15, but it ultimately comes to the same, to the same spot. And, and basically, the, the reverter, the Hospital Hill reverter, wherever you wanna look at it, it's, it really isn't, it's not an interest, in my opinion, it's not an interest in real estate. It's part of the contract that was in, in the deed from 1999, which I'm, which was approved by the city council. Along with the details about how conflicts can be resolved in that deed, including the reverter, so that's, if that's helpful, that's-
No, I would just, you know, you're, you kinda represent this body of government right here, this, this city council, I'm just trying to see what your viewpoint was on everything that was discussed tonight, if you had anything extra, if you agreed to, so would you advise us to vote yes or no on the, on the amendment?
I would say no for different rea, that's a different issue, I think that basically the, the LDA- I think that basically the, the LDA, the council has a role, and the LDA has to be approved by the council in order to be valid or enforceable. But I don't think it's, but it should be negotiated by, or I think that it's set up in your former government and in the DHCD regulations that the executive office negotiates the deal, and then it's, it's approved by the, by the council. Of course, it, to have this dialogue is helpful because you don't want to negotiate blindly for indefinitely and without some sense of where this body stands. And I think you're making that, you know, you're, I think it's, it's, it's appropriate to make those, make those points. But I don't think that necessarily means that, that the council amendment is, the amendment of the, is, of the, is appropriate. The amendment of the order as to what should happen with the draft of the LDA that was submitted to you back, I think, the beginning of March, and I can say that you haven't seen it, we still don't have a, a subsequent draft, but it's going to, it's going to be very different, very different.
We, we just have a lot of parties at the table here. When I say that, we have a $4.2 million agreement to be given to the city for free cash. We have residents that live up on that Whitwell site. You know, you've got Glendale Road, you've got Colonial Drive, you've got Dixwell, I mean, you, you've got Whitwell. I mean, you've got a neighborhood that lives up there. You have an emergency room that's sitting up there right now that's being used by people that are in the city, close to 100,000 people here. And then we have an LDA in front of us to get to the downtown to revitalize the downtown and give a medical use, which is 200,000 square feet of medical use in the downtown. So we have a lot of different, different, I guess, connecting, non-connecting situations here and a lot of parties. So we're just trying to do our due diligence up here, and we're just trying, at the end of the day, for me, I represent the citizens of the city. If they tell me something, and I'm, I said, you know, that's a good point, I'll raise it when I'm up at the council, and that's my job as a, as a city councillor for the folks of the city. So I'm sure it probably isn't going to be a vote tonight. We'll talk more discussion on this. I'm glad that Mr. Timmons had come in tonight, some of the questions that we didn't have, and you being here as well. So that is it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much.
Counselor DeBona. Counselor Mahoney.
My turn? Oh, sorry. I think my first question is going to be to Mr. Timmons. Good evening. How are you? You're getting to stay up there all night, Jim. It's all, it's all, it's all about the gems tonight. So when you were discussing in the, the reverter and, and, you know, I, I might repeat a few things that other people have, but just because I think it's, it's going to be helpful. So tolling agreement, tolling agreement came into place in 1999. I mean, the, the reverter came into place in 1999, correct?
Can you say that again?
The reverter, when you talked, so it was established in 1999. That was the first sale of the hospital, correct?
That's when it came online, right, in the deed. Is that what you're asking?
Yep. And that, was that the original tolling agreement too, just for historic preferences?
No. The reverter was part of the deed in 1999. And then what happened is when you moved forward in 2011 and Quincy Medical files for bankruptcy, Stewart is looking to buy out of bankruptcy court. We got the reverter provision into that agreement again, and then when Stewart looked to sell to FoxRock, we did the amended tolling agreement. But the first one actually was dated, I don't have the dated version. It's dated December 30th of 2014, and it was dated at that juncture because Stewart was looking to leave the city and stop its operation of the hospital, and they didn't want us to assert at the time that they left that they were no longer operating a hospital and the reverter applied. So the sequence, and I'm sorry I was unclear to you, 1999 deed from Quincy to Quincy Medical Center, Inc., with a reverter in it. In 2011, there's a sale to Stewart with a reverter provision in it. In 2014, when Stewart closes down its operation, that's when the first tolling agreement was signed, and that one just simply said we'd all stand down and hold, hold our positions until Stewart could evaluate its position. And one of the reasons we did that was Stewart was still subject to oversight from the Attorney General.
Right.
And then the second one is in December of 2016 when FoxRock and Stewart entered into their agreement.
Okay. And so the first tolling agreement specified medical conditions. Could you tell me the definition of, in the tolling agreement, in your words, what is medical, what does it mean for it to be medical?
Medical uses?
Mm-hmm.
It was as defined in the Special Act, the first tolling agreement. And the Special Act was in 1999.
So what does medical use mean?
Pardon me?
What does it mean for medical use?
I haven't looked at it in a while. I have the, actually, the Special Act is in the book and, and they're defined. I'm, I'm not quite certain.
Okay.
Of what they, what they were.
That's important, and it's, it's important for you as our city solicitor to come to us as a council meeting to be able to define what medical use means for the tolling agreement. It's not up for me. I can certainly tell you what it says in the tolling agreement, but I need you to define it because that would be able to provide me the opportunity to go to the next question for you so that I can understand some of the things and kind of untangle some of the things that you said earlier. But the fact that you're standing before me telling me some things, I, I can't do that without you telling me to define what the medical use is. It's the tolling.
If you choose, we want to stop.
Yep.
The first, first document in it is the Special Act, Chapter 94. And I believe that's where... But that may be something I have to look at. I'll have to find out because I just don't see it readily as I stand here now. There were some things I'm conversant with, but that particular, the issue of definition of medical use, I'm not sure of.
Okay.
And it's not, it doesn't show up in the definition section that we have here. So it might be in the act, but it appears there's only a portion of the act in this book that was provided to you. So I can get that for you.
So in the tolling agreement and a reverter, did the language open up where it said that the hospital could be used for other things other than a hospital at any time?
The second tolling agreement, you're saying?
I'm asking you. I don't, I'm asking you to define.
Well, I'm asking which tolling agreement.
I'm asking, well, you don't have the medical use, so when I'm asking you for the medical use, you don't have that handy to tell me. I'm asking you, when did the language change? There was some opening of the doors where medical use was defined differently than, is it hospital only, or was there other definitions as to what medical use would be for the 114 Whitwell and the reverter?
Okay, that's, that's one I'll have to look at too, and I'll get you that information.
Okay.
I know that we addressed it in the second tolling agreement. It was addressed with some specificity, and I recall Mr. Broderick and I are working on that, but I'll have to get you, I'll get you the particulars of that.
Well, I'm going to go back in time now, just for myself, for my own history. So back when FoxRock first purchased the property and they started to do their presentations on what would, could or might happen, and this was part of the $1.5 million of explaining what could be coming to the hospital site, it included things such as nursing homes and other uses. Is that correct? Would that extend the use of what that was?
Not nursing homes.
Mm-hmm. Assisted living?
What's that? Here it is. Medical uses, and this is in the amended, the current operative tolling agreement. Medical uses is deemed to include, without limitation, hospital, emergency care, outpatient clinic, continuing long-term care, medical office, medical research, education and training, assisted living, senior independent living, and similar medical-related services. And we specifically said, because we were taking the hospital, at least potentially, the traditional community hospital offsite, we specifically agreed that it's the intent of the parties that this definition is intended to be more expansive than the one in the Special Act. So we agreed that the potential uses that could go up there under the $1.5 million redevelopment approach would be more expansive.
Okay. And that tolling agreement was signed by the city, and it was never brought to the city council, is that correct?
Correct.
And is there a reason why that was not brought to the city council?
Yeah, at the time, I didn't believe it had to be brought to the city council. This was an executive branch function where we were working on a deal, and I know that part of what the mayor wanted to do was make certain that to the extent we were starting to get onto the Ross, well, FoxRock was starting to get onto the Ross parking area, that that should be underway before we start to talk about all this publicly. Because essentially, this is just the terms of what may happen at some future date, and when it was to come to fruition, that's when we're going to bring it in front of the council.
Okay. So, but it was 20, it was 2016 when this came, and you didn't bring it to the council. You bring it to the council, and it was forgotten in the presentation, in the first presentation to share with all of the councillors. It was an oversight that was missed, would you say it was missed, not, not provided? But yet, in the LDA, it refers to the tolling agreement. So it, it feels as though, and, and for this whole, and I, I did talk to Mr. Shea about this, it feels as though that this was mishmash of an LDA thrown together without a lot of thought, and I'm sure it wasn't. As well as when we had Council Yang asking the question about the 4.25 million dollars, how did you come to it? Where, and you say, you know, nonchalantly, you're saying, well, there's not a lot of reverters that happen. Okay, well, I know, but that's, you know, there's, there's not a lot of, a lot of things that don't happen. But you spent a lot of time opening up the doors for a tolling agreement that was a deal that was cut that supposedly said it was going to come to the council. It looks like it's supposed to have a council vote, at least back in 2016, because when you read the tolling agreement, it says upon vote of the council. It says that in the tolling agreement that you didn't bring to the council to vote on it because you weren't ready to bring it back in 2000, whatever, 2016.
No, I didn't say that, but let's not whatever.
Okay, well, you know, but you did say...
Why don't we stop for one minute, and please let me respond? Pardon me? I'd like to respond because I really think mishmash and hodge, whatever other terms you used are extremely unfortunate and really inappropriate to talk about what's gone on here in that manner. This did not come before the council because I did not think it had to come before the council because at the time, what we were doing was trying to preserve an environment where we got healthcare in the city. FoxRock came forward, using the analogies that Council Yang has used, we were essentially at the offer to purchase stage. Now, back at that point in time, Mr. Broderick was very, I don't know if the word is adamant, but he really wanted it to come before the council, and there was discussion that I wasn't exactly fully privy to, but there was discussion about the dynamics that might occur and about FoxRock, and it's similar what, when I was talking to Counselor DeBona a little earlier about having the public discussions here. If anyone wants to talk about anything privately, we're happy to.
Not talk about anything.
But I'll just point out to you that I had referenced a newspaper article in the Patriot Ledger, December, I think it was December 4th, and the, the agreement was published in the newspaper.
Mm-hmm.
And it was discussed in the newspaper, December 8th, 2016.
If I could.
4:00 PM. It makes it in the Patriot Ledger, and no one asked, well, I shouldn't say no one asked questions. I know at one point in time, the chairman, Counselor Kane, happens to be my ward councillor, this happens to be in his ward, and he talked to me about it, wondering what was going on. But it was in the newspaper. It wasn't concealed from anybody or anybody. We just didn't bring it forward at that time.
Okay, my turn, Jim.
Well, that's fine, but I'm just responding.
So, so the fact of the matter is that it's before the council now, it was in the newspaper in 2000, what, December 2016? Is that what it was? So in December 2016, it was in the newspaper. Should you have wanted to educate the current body that's sitting here tonight talking about an LDA that you've worked really hard on, that you took maybe three months now to come back and tell us it was in the newspaper? I guess I have to do all my researches in the Patriot Ledger, and that's where I get it from because for us to learn anything, even where you get your number, it's, oh, I don't really know where I got the number from. No, that's exactly how you described it, Jim. And to be completely fair, you came up here and you made it seem as though what, us asking questions is problematic or disenfranchised to this. And you also said that you, that they were going to be rebuilding a hospital down at the Ross. This is your words, we can go back and watch the tape. I said, build a hospital, question mark. It's not a hospital that they're building down at the Ross parking lot, it's a medical use building, correct? But you said build a hospital. And here's the other thing, it's scare tactics.
Okay, well, here, here. You asked correct. You asked correct. Let me answer that. Perhaps during the flow of two hours, I misstated using the word hospital instead of medical use. I've used the word hospital a lot.
I just want clarification.
And perhaps because I've been, yeah, I've been looking around, trying to address my audience, and periodically I see people on their cell phones. I've seen you on your cellphone while I've been speaking. Perhaps you missed something.
No, I have notes.
It's possible.
I have notes on my cellphone, Jim.
All right? And, you know, I, well, I forget what the other, oh, that I just kind of said I don't know where the number came from. I didn't say that. I said it was negotiated.
You have no documentation.
Over a period of time by Mr. Broderick and me. And can you look behind you, next to Counselor Harris? Can you please take a look at something? Can you please take a look at, all right? Pardon me one minute. I'm not that slicker.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's important, as you talk about the public everything, it's important for people to understand, this is just a portion of what I've been talking about tonight, about the volumes of information I have, appraisals and other items that I have been dealing with since 2011. And I have told, I told you the first time I spoke, I've told everybody, you want to come look at them, I will put them out on a table, and you can look at them. So this is what I used. You'll note that I've already provided to the clerk of committees the document that Counselor Yang asked about because I'm very conversive with this material. So I didn't just pluck numbers out of the air, as I've explained, and perhaps you missed, this was negotiated on an informed basis by someone who's been dealing with this site since 2011. That's what happened.
Mm-hmm. You. It's been negotiated by you because you've been dealing with these sites since 2011?
The value of the reverter.
Mm-hmm. And you don't have a, I don't know, maybe a, you know, an outline that you could have put together for the council to give that explanation, just you coming up telling us that we should trust that that's what we need to believe in. Let me go back to...
Correct. As I said to Counselor Yang.
Let me go back.
I've been up here for two hours explaining how I got there, and I said if she'd like me to reduce to writing everything I said, I'll take the time and do it.
It's, Jim, it's your...
But to the extent there are written documents, they exist, and I've been trying to share them.
You seem to be very frustrated at the fact that we ask questions and that you don't have an...
Not at all.
You do.
I've had no problem. It's when the approach that you're taking, which isn't to ask... I've had no problem, it's when the approach that you're taking, which isn't to ask questions.
I am asking questions, and I'm going to ask my next question.
Pardon me?
I'm going to ask my next question.
Do you call, you said, "Hospital" instead of "medical use"?
That's a question.
You call that a question?
Well, I call it a question when I talk about the tolling agreement.
I think you're abusing a public official at the podium.
I'm not abusing anybody.
And I've seen you do this to others, who I have said-
Wow.
That shouldn't be happening to you, and it's not going to happen to me much longer. I'm happy to answer questions, but I'm not going to be cross-examined or abused. You have not once called me or taken me up on my offer to come and look at anything.
I have called you, Jim.
And now you're here-
Jim, I have called you, and I've also called, I've called Council Shea.
Sure, and I have returned your call.
Have I called Council?
Understood. But now you're here, cross-examining me, interrupting me, saying, "You said 'hospital', not 'medical use,' and yes, I am very, very irritated by that. You're absolutely correct.
I think you repeated several times that there's no appetite for "hospital," and it's kind of fear tactics that I think are being played when you say, "There's no, there is no appetite for 'hospital,' but that's why you opened up the tolling agreement, to create a looser definition of what medical use could be." And you said it, you said it yourself just a little while ago, that that's what the second agreement for the tolling agreement had done. And I was trying to get that understanding. So, now that we're in the compliance with Chapter 30B section, where you say Quincy owns nothing that is subject to 30B, there is no seal or rental of interest of this. And in fact, in the Office of the Attorney General, in the Chapter 30B, it's a manual offers an example of preservation restrictions being subject to Section 16. In the case of 114 Whitwell Street, I would say restriction is similar to a preservation restriction. So, I'm trying to understand that, because when I'm looking at that, it's pretty specific that what we're talking about is a preservation restriction and a use restriction, which does actually have an interest in real estate, which is our interest in real estate for that area. So, that would be for the statement where you say Quincy owns nothing that is subject to, to the 30B. And then when you go on to talk about the other options, I'm trying to understand that, because that is your loose opinion of that, and I'd like to get a real opinion of that, because I do believe that it falls into Chapter 30B. I don't, I do believe, I did talk to Mr. Shea today, and he did say that his restriction is for the LDA, which is down in the Ross parking lot, and that he didn't feel that necessarily that the reverter was the area of his expertise. Was that correct? That was what you said this afternoon, something to that? Pardon me? Would you like to come to the mic? And we did have a nice conversation today, I believe, Mr. Shea, did we not? Okay, well, because I would hate for anybody at home to think that I do not have conversations with our legal counsel to be able to make sure we're having informed decisions. And, Mr. Shea, you can stay up here, because as Mr. Timmons, I'd like to know, you did say to me today, that's kind of outside your restriction, and Jen Manning was very nice to explain to me that Counselor Jim Shea has been brought on for the city council's use for the LDA, should we have questions, and it's specifically for the downtown area, correct?
Correct.
And when we started to go up to 114 Whitwell and starting talking about the reverter, I believe we were starting to get into a different jurisdiction.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And that is because 114 Whitwell is not in the downtown area, is that correct?
Yeah, and it's also a completely, yeah.
And it's a completely different dialogue, even though we're talking about in the LDA, which you had said to Council Debona, concerns about the LDA, when he was asking, maybe, I'm not sure if it was appropriate, he asked if you thought we should vote for yes or no, up, down? But, but your, the question was, you know, for me, I tie them all together, because we have in the LDA, 114 Whitwell Street and a reverter, and then we have the Ross parking lot, which I'm going to be asking Mr. Gary as well, that has a value of $140 per square foot, but yet we don't have a total value of the total square footage of the lot that is under description as being of use of zero, because we're going to take the medical use at 114 Whitwell and bring it down to Ross. And by putting that restriction on the developer, it makes the land not worthy of the value, because we're not saying he can build whatever he wants, we're saying you have to build this, and that's what makes it, makes the price change there. However, we as a city council don't have access to any of this. And then in the LDA, and I'm so sorry, Mr. Timmons, for this, it is loosey-goosey. We are talking about medical use, we are talking about a hotel, and we are talking about workforce housing. However, medical use is the only thing that's in the LDA, isn't that true? There's no workforce housing in the written language of the LDA, and no hotel. So, I would say we're in kind of tricky territory if we say yes to that LDA, and that's where it gets questionable.
Well, I'm not, no one's asking you to say yes to the LDA, it's not even close to being ready for-
It's not, but my point is, is that the questions I'm asking are informative questions that would make the LDA stronger, so that we can have this dialogue to make sure that we can make informed decisions for the taxpayers of the city of Quincy.
Yeah, that's-
And without those restrictions added into it, it could be, if we were to vote yes on something without always asking those questions, it would be negligence on our part as city councillors, I believe.
Then you can vote no.
That's true. But we can also ask the questions to anybody, and I don't think I'm bullying anybody. But with going back to-
Yes.
Section 30B, that you said to me this afternoon that you didn't feel that you could answer that question, in the manual for Chapter 30B, it basically gives the example of preservation restrictions being subject to Section 16. In the case of 114 Whitwell Street, the use of restrictions is similar to that preservation restriction. Would you agree?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
If I have to answer yes or no?
No, I don't, I think, I would like an explanation. I'm looking, instead of coming up telling me what Mr. Timmons is coming up saying, "Absolutely not," there's some area for that to be discussed.
Well, I believe a preservation restriction is governed by general law, and whereas the reverter is something that was created by contract, when I say contract, it was by the deed, granting the deed and the acceptance of the deed by the grantee. And that has a reverter in it, but it also has statements about how disputes about the reverter and so on will be governed. So, I think it's far more, although I get up, do a little research on preservation restrictions, but I think those are creatures of statute that are, that are property rights.
Mm-hmm. But there's an interest in that real estate, too, that would fall into Section 30B as well, because it's a reverter, the reverter.
Preservation restriction, yeah.
Mm-hmm. But the reverter also has an interest of real estate as well. And the reason why I bring this up is because I do think it falls into the category that it would need to be more than just in the LDA, and that we should be able to have that discussion here at the council.
I'm not following you on that one.
Hmm?
What do you mean by that?
In the fact that when you, if you're using, which, where does it fall, where does it fall into? Chapter 30B, or does it fall into Chapter 40, Section 15?
Well, 40, Section 15, again, we, people, that statute, the way I read it, and I haven't spent a lot of time on it, talks about property that was taken by the municipality by eminent domain. And it's my understanding that the original, the City Hospital, the Hospital Hill site was deeded to the city, and it wasn't a result of a taking by eminent domain.
So, then how, yes, then how does then Section 40, Chapter 15 work in the fact where it says, "Compliance with this," and it says, "Given the comprehensive program before you from the form of the LDA, the approval of the city council is being sought to comply with this statute."
Where are you reading from?
This was the memo that was handed out to us-
Oh, yeah.
This evening.
Again.
As far as I know, I just got it this evening. I don't know if we had it prior to this evening's meeting, did we?
Yeah, I understand it. Your memo. Okay, yeah. What, well, I'm just going to say from my, you asked me, for my limited exposure to this issue, I believe, I, I believe that it's, it doesn't apply, or is an argument that it doesn't apply. But I also understand, as the course of the day went on, that this, people don't want that uncertainty. So, that's why they're asking you to vote. Am I wrong?
So, you believe it doesn't apply?
Essentially, what happened with 40, Section 15 was, that was Mr. Broderick, who really pushed for it.
I'm sorry, who's Mr. Broderick?
Mr. Broderick's right here.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's counsel for Fox Rock. And the reason, you know, one of the things in the background here that's a real issue for permitting lawyers, is that after all the permits issue, then the bank title lawyers look at everything, and the financing starts to kick into play. So, when able, most good permitting lawyers do what they can to make sure that they put a belt and suspenders on everything. So, the fact of the matter is where this involves a conveyance of an interest, which 40, a release of an interest, I should say, not a conveyance, a release of an interest in real estate, even though I've taken the position all along that it's non-invested, so, you know, that's, that's a problem. I had put, on page three of my memo, I began with, "Although the need for compliance with generalized, Chapter 40, Section 15 is also questionable." And this, this gets into Counsel Hughes's question, that there are questions about it, including the one that Mr. Shea just mentioned, about whether it's only applicable in the case of eminent domain.
Mm-hmm. Again, I think these are, we got this, when did we get this memo, Jim?
I don't know when you got it.
Was it emailed to us?
I mean, I sent it out this afternoon.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't, so I'm having, I will, I'm going to say for the record, and Jen has my phone, I'm having email problems, so I'm not receiving things. So, I just got it this evening, so for me to be able to digest it, and I apologize for that, because I don't-
You don't have to apologize. What I did, and I said in my email, I was preparing comments, I'm assembling stuff and all, and I thought, you know, and I'll reduce this to writing, and those who can read it ahead of time will have it, those who want to read it after, after the discussion occurs will have it, and that's why I did it.
Well, I appreciate being here in printed form. Jim, I, I don't agree with, I think it really falls into the 30B category when I'm reading it, and it goes to the manual. I'm not a lawyer, though, and that's why I called Mr. Shea today. And I do call you, so I do take offense when you say, "I didn't call you today," but I have, we have spoken about issues, so-
Well, I certainly regret we didn't have the chance to chat.
Yeah, I'm certainly too.
I would have happily called you back, honestly.
Yeah, well, you know, and I'm, you know, I'm sorry that you think I bully you, I, you know, I can understand that, think I bully you and others, but, you know, coming to these questions, it's, the reality of it is, is that the presentation that was put in front of us specifically for the LDA only addresses a medical use building, and there are a lot of things in the LDA that are not secured. And it is my job as a councillor at large to work for the benefit of the taxpayers and the constituents of the city of Quincy, and to make sure that we're making the best choices that we can make in the protection of what we're doing. And I will go back, it's medical use. The medical use building, we have an emergency room up at 114 Whitwell, the medical use as defined down at Ross parking lot is not completely defined, and it's not going to be an urgent care, it's not going to be 24/7, it's not going to have an ER, so therefore, I don't see them as being the same, and I'm not sure if we bid it out to, as far as Hospital Hill, I don't know if it was bid out to other places for them to be able to determine whether or not they could have assisted living, things that we do need here in the city of Quincy, or other uses of that area. And nor, when we talk about the value of Ross parking lot, have we bid out, that I know of, other uses to see if we have other appetites to do things. But what we have is a developer who's going to develop, so it's a commercial property up at 114 Whitwell, correct, right now? It's commercial?
Well, it's all part of, it's kind of a, you know, a sequential march forward, so, right now, there's still a reverter in place up there, and it's all, as we've been talking about, all part of one, you know, whole. There's a lot of work on both projects.
Mm-hmm. But it's going to be residential. The proposal in front of the planning board would be residential.
I'm not even sure, I have not looked at what they've proposed from up there, and, you know, I, I'm not certain.
I find that-
And there may be pushback, you know, or there's already been changes as a result of enablement input, there may be additional changes. One of the things that's happened, we have seen, is, is Fox Rock's been responsive to input. So, if there's suggestions, I think they'd at least hear it, and then you'd certainly hear why they're not doing something if they don't. But I've heard, I hear your questions tonight, I'm happy to see what I can find for answers. We'll do so.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel Hughes.
It's, well, okay, just, Mr. Shea, if I could just ask Mr. Shea a quick question. It sounded like you question our ability to even amend the LDA, where we have approval, but the executive has the ultimate authority to negotiate the terms of the contract, so that an amendment is not, you said it quickly? Sorry, I just wanted to go back to it. So that an amendment is not the proper way for us to try to alter the contract, that we should try to convince the executive to do so, that that is the appropriate way for the council to approach it?
I think, I think yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Clearly, we still have a lot to discuss and to understand more about this, and so I think what we're going to do, we're not going to take any votes tonight, we're going to schedule another meeting to discuss the red-line version of the LDA, along with the amended proposal that came through at the last meeting. So, that will be on June 12th, we'll just add that to the Finance Committee meeting on that day. So, we look forward to seeing you all then. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the regularly scheduled city council meeting back to order. We are going to begin with communications and reports from the mayor and other city officers and city boards. Mr. Clerk, I believe you have utilities and traffic, sir.
Correct, correct, Mr. President. First communication is grant a location from Mass Electric. It is an installed two-to-four inch conduit, concrete and case from P. 335 Atlantic Street to the property line of 57 Quincy Shore Drive, located approximately 50 feet north of Paul. Underground conduit are needed to provide electric service to 57 Quincy Shore Drive.
And that'll go to Public Works?
Public Works.
Public Works. Traffic's as well?
Yep, sure, we have two traffics. Mr. President, add a four-way stop sign at intersection of Rock Island Road at Littlefield Street, Ward 1. Okay, move approval.
It's got a, the traffics go to ordinance, correct?
Yes, correct. And then we have one from Ward 4, Mr. Resident Counsel Palmucci, add handicap parking at 144 Quincy Street.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
I have another communication, it's from a group of taxpayers, it's to the city of Quincy, 10 taxpayer petition. We, the undersigned residents and taxpayers of the city of Quincy, hereby petition the city council of the city of Quincy to rezone a parcel of land located at 1260 and 1266 C Street, and as shown as Lot 35-1 and 336-2, on assessors plan number 101-2. From business B to residence A, in conformity-
On the motion, Counsel McCarthy.
Motion to move it to the ordinance committee.
Okay, motion made by Counsel McCarthy, second by Counsel Hughes, to move to ordinance, all those in favor. I post, the ayes have it. Anything else, Mr. Clerk?
Nope, that is of communications.
Okay, so that concludes communications. Any unfinished business in preceding meetings? Seeing none. Reports of committees? Counsel Harris, you are up, sir, with, I believe, several utilities, right?
I do. A public hearing was held on this, on this prior, request prior to this evening's city council meeting on Council Order 2019-081, utility grant location, Mass Electric, Verizon, Whitwell Street. I move positive recommendation made by the Public Works Committee.
Motion made by Counsel Harris, second by Counsel Liang. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Counsel Kane. Counsel Debona. Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes. Counsel Liang. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci. President Crowe.
Yes, seven members, and passes. Counsel.
A public hearing was held on this request prior to this evening's city council meeting on Council Order 2019-093, utility grant location, Mass Electric, 150 Hancock Street. I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Harris, second by Counsel Liang. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam, uh, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Kane. Counsel Debona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes. Counsel Liang. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Palmucci. President Crowe.
Yes, seven members.
Okay, a public hearing was held again, this, earlier this evening, 2019-094, utility grant of location, Mass Electric, 150 Hancock Street.